Alderman Bass.
Here.
Alderman Cleaver.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Knox.
Here.
Alderman Mills.
Here.
Alderman Stratton. There's a quorum.
Next item, invocation led by Pastor Darrell Jones of Crossroads Church, followed by pledge of allegiance led by Alderman Stratton.
Our gracious Father, we are grateful again today for the gifts that you give to us. We're thankful for life and the privilege of living it today, for breath, for freedom and independence, God, for the gift of love and peace, and to be able to seek peace and law and order, and to have a community that loves that and seeks after that as well. God, I'm thankful for a community that's interested, that participates for leaders, that care enough about our community to lead, and take time out of their schedules to be here tonight to transact the business of this community. So we can continue to move forward, loving our neighbor as ourselves and serving one another as you have served us. So I pray that you would intervene tonight among each of these servants, these civil servants that are elected and also are hired, as they transact the business. Give them discernment, give them wisdom. God, give them love and compassion for one another and for our community, for the good of our community, and for the good of all who are in need.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, business, approval of agenda.
No changes, Mayor.
Next item, proclamation, seeing none. Next item, offer's oath.
Krista and, let's see here, Dustin, do you guys want to come up? We'll do Krista first and then we'll... I, Krista James.
I, Krista James.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the State of Missouri.
And the State of Missouri.
That I will observe the provisions and the ordinances.
That I will observe the provisions and the ordinances.
Of the City of Grain Valley.
Of the City of Grain Valley.
And that I will faithfully discharge all of my duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge all of my duties.
As a member of the Grain Valley Missouri Police Department.
As a member of the Grain Valley Police Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
You draw any blood, she's armed.
I don't think they got it.
I, Dustin Lancaster. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and...
That I will support the Constitution and...
The laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the State of Missouri.
And the State of Missouri.
That I will observe the provisions and the ordinances.
That I will observe the provisions and the ordinances.
Of the City of Grain Valley.
Of the City of Grain Valley.
And that I will faithfully discharge all of my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge all my duties.
As a member of the Grain Valley Missouri Police Department.
As the Grain Valley Missouri Police Department.
So help me God.
Officer James, Officer Lancaster, we're proud to have you on board. You're both stepping into a profession that a lot of people are stepping away from right now, and we're proud of you and proud of all of our officers. Thank you very much. Next item, citizens' participation. Anyone like to address the board? Please limit your comments to two minutes and state your name and address.
What'd you do? Lead innocents.
Whoa, you need help? Always.
Know that.
Really want me to shoot? All right. This has Chuck Johnson's name on it. I trust he is. Reason we're here, Pathways of Honor, we're here to, as a representative of veterans, you guys were kind enough to help us for our celebration of veterans, as well as speakers. And the veterans would like to thank you. And we've made up this commemoration of veterans who were on the site that day. And these guys will all thank you and the city for all your help. And I just wanted to make sure that you guys understand that we are very grateful for all the assistance you've given us. The city's worked very well with us. Police Department worked very well with us. And Shannan's honor, and the House of Senate, all the teams shine. So we want to thank you. And thank you very much for your help.
Next order of business, previous business, seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped it. Checked the wrong one first. Next door business, consent agenda.
Mayor, I move we accept the consent agenda.
Motion to approve or accept the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Second, Alderman Knox. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Next order, previous business, seeing none. Next order, new business. Request to approve the 21-22 liquor license renewals for the following businesses in the City of Grain Valley. B&amp;B Theaters Operating Company doing business with B&amp;B Theaters, Grain Valley Marketplace. Captain's Pub LLC. Casey's General Store, number 2209. Casey's General Store, number 2808. Casey's General Store, number 3325. Constantino's Price Chopper, number 325. Discount Liquor and Smokes. Dollar General Store, number 9597. Impact Motorsports LLC doing business with Valley Speedway. Iron Kettle Brewing LLC. JY Amigos Incorporated doing business at Al Mugway's. Outer Belt Entertainment doing business as Mo Country. Quick Trip Corporation. Hemp Stop LLC. Valley Pub and Patio LLC.
One thing we wanted to note is that Iron Kettle Brewing is adding a Sunday sales license. They started back in March as a new liquor license that you all approved. They're now adding Sunday sales. They do have their state and county Sunday sales already, but they're adding it here in the City of Grain Valley now. The other thing to note is a lot of these, I think I've received now two county licenses. I got one just a little bit ago. County was late sending out their renewals this year, so many of these businesses did not get their renewal applications until a week ago. So they're all kind of struggling to get those in on time. So part of tonight's approval, we would request that you all would allow these renewals to continue operating as they normally have, and then give them until the 26th of July to get in those county license renewals. We won't issue our paper one until all of those come in or until we receive all the outstanding requirements for each business. But due to the county being behind on sending out their renewals, we are requesting that you all allow them to continue operating so they don't have a, I guess, a stall in their business. And that's it on those.
Next item, liquor license for shifting gears.
So that one we need to...
Wait, we want to vote on that? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve those liquor licenses?
So moved.
I have a motion from Alderman Headley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Mills. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries, six zero. Next item, liquor license for shifting gears bar and grill.
This is a new license here in the City of Grain Valley on 511 Main with Mr. Pienza and then Paul Wild shoots, which is also a part owner of that one. It is requesting for a regular liquor license like the other ones. Their drawing of it, they would like to include a patio on the back. It is not enclosed at this point. It is also over a city right-of-way. Typically, we do not allow liquor sales on city right-of-ways, so we have explained that process of how to remove the right-of-way or how the owner could remove that. So tonight, we're just requesting for the interior of that premises at 511 Main. And it would just be presentation tonight, and the next time would be the request for approval. So, and he is here tonight, if you guys have any questions for him.
I'd like a motion to approve liquor license.
That one we don't have to do tonight, it's next time.
That one we don't have to do. Okay, all right. Any discussion then? Any questions?
What will the hours be of the business?
Including Sundays?
Okay, yeah.
Jamie, I have one question.
Yeah.
Real quick too. Sorry to go back. The calendar dates between now and July 26th, is Iron Kettle going to serve on Sundays between now and then? Are we honoring the Sunday?
So they already have theirs in, actually.
Okay.
Just tonight, as we were sitting here, he's been pressuring, showing up at their doorstep. So I do have theirs, their Sunday for state, county, and then this would just be adding hours now. It was one that I did have.
No other questions for Mr. Pienza? In that case, we'll move on to presentation, seeing none. Public hearing, seeing none. Next item, resolution. A resolution, R 21-42, a resolution appointing Lisa Limbaugh Berg, I'm sorry, to the Grain Valley Parks Board for a three-year term.
I move that we approve resolution number R 21-42.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Alderman Stratton. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries, six zero. Next item, ordinance B 21-14.
This is an ordinance changing the zoning on approximately 5.12 acres from District C 2, General Business District, to R 3 P, Multi-Family Residential District, Planned Overlay District, and a change of zoning on approximately 1.92 acres from District C 2, General Business District, to District C 2 P, General Business, Planned Overlay District, and approval of preliminary development plan for Greystone West, Tract A.
Mayor, I move we accept the second reading for bill number B 21-14 and approve it for ordinance 2548.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Bass. Any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, I just wanted to reiterate what Mr. Trozen had gone over in the last meeting, and that was that both this ordinance and the next ordinance, which combined are Graystone West development. The zone change is consistent with the approved comprehensive planned land use map, which is what staff goes off of when we are looking at approvals that come in and any possible zone changes associated with that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bass.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
No.
Alderman Headley.
Yes.
Alderman Knox.
No.
Alderman Mills.
Yes.
Alderman Stratton.
No.
Vote is three-three. I'll vote to break the tie, I vote in favor. Next item, B 21-15.
This is an ordinance changing the zoning on approximately 3.37 acres from District C 2, General Business District, to R 3 P, Multi-Family Residential District, Planned Overlay District, and approval of the preliminary development plan for Greystone West, Tract B.
Mayor, I move we accept the second reading of bill B 21-15 and approve it as ordinance number 2549.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Mills. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bass.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
No.
Alderman Headley.
Yes.
Alderman Mills.
Yes.
Alderman Knox.
No.
Alderman Stratton.
No.
Tie vote again, I will vote to break the tie, I vote in favor. Motion carries, four-three. Next item of business, city attorney's report.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Next item, city administrator and staff report.
Mayor and board, the only thing we had was just a reminder about the workshop Wednesday at 6:30.
Next item, board of Alderman reports and comments. Alderman Bass.
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Cleaver.
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Headley.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Knox.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Chief Bill on his new officers to the police force.
Alderman Mills.
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Stratton.
Nothing at this time.
Mayor's report, we have a presentation to make, I'll come up front in a second here. Mr. Murphy is our city administrator, has now been with the city for 15 years. In the past, he's worked as city planner, interim public works director, community development director, and assistant city administrator before taking the position. You'd step up front, please. Get the wrong steps tonight. Been right behind you. I for one forgot to say that I'm very pleased you're with us, I think you do a great job and you're an asset to the city.
Thank you.
Second that.
I'll third that.
I don't believe there's need for executive session tonight. That being said, meeting adjourned. I don't believe there's need for executive session tonight. That being said, meeting adjourned.